Okay, good evening, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order. Just a little housekeeping. We have some air units now in the, in the chamber. So last, last week, I think we were a little quiet perhaps on the microphone. So if you're speaking, if you could just lean into the mic so that we can, we can hear you, that'd be great from a housekeeping perspective. And we do have common clerk, one item we'd just like to add to the agenda that we missed from last week.
That's correct, your worship. Staff is requesting that council consider adding an item which was the denial of a pension under the Heart and Lung Act to the open session agenda tonight, which was dealt with in committee, the whole closed on Monday night. If we could, your worship.
Yes. Okay, so move that and then so there'd be the two items, that item and the one other item on the agenda. So just move an approval of the agenda, please. Think so. Sorry. Is that councillor, mayor with you? Who said? I'll move by the deputy second, by someone down there. Great. Thank you. And on the agenda. Oh, sorry. Councillor, okay. All those in favor? Anybody contrary minded? There we go. Thank you. Motion's carried. First item.
And so, your worship, the first item would be the denial of pension under Heart and Lung Act, and the motion would read, be it resolved that council, that common council that has, that common council has approved that it be denied, that employee identified by employee number blank be denied a pension pursuant to the terms of the Heart and Lung Act as interpreted, having regard to the interpretive clarification provided in the order of the Court of Queen's Bench in New Brunswick dated April 5th, 2018.
Thank you. Move by the deputies, seconded by councillor Sullivan on the question. Don't see any lights. All those in favor? Anybody contrary minded? Not seeing any. Thank you. Thank you. Next item.
And, your worship, the item on the agenda is sustaining St. John a three-part plan, item 1.1.
Your worship, I'd like to move to you, St. John, accept and endorse the report titled, Sustaining St. John a Three-Part Plan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, city manager, I'll get you a microphone.
Your worship, members of council, good evening. The staff presentation for this has a specific aim and outline as shown on this slide. For members of council, there is nothing new in this presentation. There's nothing you have not heard before, since you have made addressing the long and short-term financial sustainability challenges of the city of St. John a key part of your mandate from the beginning of your mandate. In fact, one could even say that it has been the priority of this council. Therefore, this briefing is being provided not for your information, but rather as a foundation for the discussion that will follow, and perhaps more importantly, as context for those members of the public who wish to observe that discussion. With that as the preamble, turning right away to the first item within the outline, the financial background information, this slide summarizes where the city of St. John obtains its revenue on an annual basis. A couple key points of note: property tax contributes approximately 77%, certainly the largest part of our annual revenue. The second point of note is that the provincial grant, shown as 24 million, 24 and a half million for the year 2019, is artificially high, and that is because of the interim funding that we are currently, currently receiving. Normally, the provincial grant is in the neighborhood of 17 to 18 million dollars. Of note, although we receive 17 to 18 million dollars from the provincial government, on an annual basis, approximately 40 to 45 million dollars of provincial levied property tax leaves the city of St. John to the province. The key deductions from this slide are twofold. First of all, it speaks to the importance of property tax reform, and it also speaks to the importance of diversing our revenue streams in the future to avoid the heavy reliance on a single stream. This next slide shows the tax-based growth of the city of St. John since 2009. You will note, first of all, the decline, and then for the past five years, our average growth has been less than 1%. The key deductions from this slide are that we must propel growth, and we must attempt to minimize actions and cuts that restrict that growth or have the potential to restrict that growth. On this next slide, we show the impact of the interim funding that the city of St. John is currently receiving. We also show the reality that after 2020, there is no interim funding, and therefore, in terms of our financial sustainability, our focus must be on that year, 2021 and beyond. This next slide, which has been overly simplified and is illustrative only, identifies the key part of our challenge. Our annual growth rate, which equates to our annual revenue growth, is approximately 1% per year, the line in blue. Our costs, on average, are 3% per year. Therefore, there's clearly a gap, and therefore, every year, that gap gets larger. This is what we have called the structural deficit, and clearly, it must be solved. This next illustrative graph shows the impact of significant cuts over a period of one or two or three years to bring the cost line back down in line with revenues. Although that would be viewed as a short-term success story, the reality is, the very next day, the structural deficit takes hold again, and the gap begins once more. Therefore, the key deduction is that we cannot simply cut to address the deficit for a year or two. The problem will return until costs balance revenue. Moving away from the simplistic illustrative to some facts and figures, these are the numbers for the city of St. John, actual for 2018, forecasted out to 2022. You will note that in 2021, we are some 12 million dollars short, and that grows to 14 to 15 million dollars in 2022. A key driver to our costs are, of course, our salaries. This slide represents the wage increases over the last five-year period, with the wage increases for our represented employees, our unionized workforce, if you will, being between 18 and 13%, more or less, with management wage increase during the same period at 10.75%. You will note the red line at the bottom, which is our growth or revenue increases, at a total of 4.5% over the same timeframe. The report provides similar conclusions over a longer period of time, and identifies that in the city of St. John, our first responders, over a 15-year period, have averaged between 65 and 75% cumulative pay raises, while the Consumer Price Index for that same period of time has been 27.5%. Since our wages, the key conclusions from that data is that changes to binding arbitration, whereby affordability could be considered, would be extremely beneficial, as would a wage escalation policy. In the absence of being able to effectively control wages, the city of St. John has taken a look at reducing its salary-wage envelope through reduction in size, achieving modest reductions over the past 10 years. The challenge, of course, is that means we need to do more with fewer people, and the question becomes, how many more can be removed? The next aspect to consider in terms of our financial situation is our tax rate, shown on this slide, and for comparative value, the tax rates of the outlying communities. Although that slide is important, and sorry, I'm going to back up for a moment and make one point, that the tax rate at 1.785, I believe the city should be very proud, and certainly the staff is very proud, of the reality that although the rate is certainly too high, it has not gone any higher, in fact, has been fixed for a period of 11 years. But the rate itself does not tell the whole story. This slide is a better representation in that it takes an average family home of approximately $170,000, and shows the tax in red that would be paid on that home in St. John and in the outlying communities. It also shows the average family income for those communities. Put most simplistically, taxes are approximately 50% more in St. John, and incomes are approximately 40 to 50% less. Therefore, the burden on a St. Johner is significantly higher. Clearly, reducing the tax rate would have a major impact for both residents and businesses. Our next consideration is debt and debt load. This graph shows how our debt has increased over the years, with the, in the latter years, the main increases being attributed to the water projects that this city has undertaken, both harbor cleanup and the safe clean drinking water project. Of equal note, however, is that in the last year, our debt has been reduced from 241 million down to approximately 231 million, a reduction of some 10 million dollars. I think this speaks to the reality that this council has made debt management a priority, and has applied a degree of discipline and rigor in its decisions over the past few years. That said, a debt management policy to ensure that moving forward is vital to controlling debt. And we are, again, quite proud to recognize that the debt management policy for the city of St. John was approved by an open session of council all three days ago. Turning to the next consideration, our infrastructure deficit. By definition, we view an infrastructure deficit as any infrastructure that is at or beyond usable life. Within the city of St. John, based on our asset management work, we estimate that we have approximately $435 million worth of infrastructure that is at or beyond end of life. The clear deduction is as we move forward, we will have to find a way to invest more in capital. With that as a summary of our financial situation, I'd now like to turn to the funding agreement of 2018. This council will be very, very well aware, since they made the decision, that in the latter part of 2017, a decision was made to address the fiscal deficit by cutting approximately 4.5 million dollars out of the annual operating budget. Those cuts would have had severe impact on services offered, service delivery by the city. The government at the time felt that the impact of those reductions in services would be too great, and therefore, offered an agreement to address those budget cuts. That agreement was approved by this common council in February of 2019, sorry, 2018. The key aspects of that agreement are shown on this slide. First, yes, there was direct short-term financial assistance offered to the city. It was not free money. We needed to justify the requirement, and before payment was, was made, the requirements needed to be validated. We did not take all the money in 2018. We do not forecast taking all the money in 2019, nor do we plan on taking all the money in, or anticipate taking all the money in 2020. The center part of this slide was also part of the agreement in that there was to be continued favorable investments in St. John in the area shown in the center of the slide. Finally, as part of the agreement, and from our point of view, most importantly, there was to be a working committee established, which later morphed in terms of a name to the Joint Sustainability Working Group. And that working committee was to develop long-term solutions deemed necessary to improve the city's fiscal situation. The quote at the bottom is directly from the agreement, and it says that actions would be considered, and any additional recommended actions aimed at solving the city's structural deficit to government would be provided on or before January 1st, 2019. With that as background, here's the remainder of the timeline in terms of the sustainability effort. In the summer of 2018, a white paper was produced by this city outlining the municipal reforms that they felt were important to ensure our long-term sustainability, not only for the city of St. John, but by extension, all municipalities within the province. In July of that year, that white paper was presented to all political parties, and it's fair to characterize that all political parties offered support for the elements within the white paper. Obviously, in November of that year, there was a change in provincial government, which was in part, and I would suggest in large part, the cause that the sustainability report was not produced by the 1st of January, and as you know, the report was issued 10 July. The working committee, or the Joint Sustainability Working Group, was formed towards the end of March, early April in 2018, and conducted its work moving forward from there. The results of that work are in a document that was released yesterday entitled, Sustaining St. John a Three-Part Plan. There are actually three sections to the report, and I think all are of note. The first section is the introduction, and in the introduction, which was developed by the working group, it spends some time describing the significant contributions and impact of the St. John economy on the New Brunswick economy. It then goes on to talk about the challenges and the unique characteristics of the city, and it also talks about the actions already taken by the city, to make the point that we have not been sitting on our hands, sitting idly by. Finally, within the introduction, it does speak to a degree about the 2018 agreement, and also offers, and I quote, "the current government perspective on that agreement." After the introduction, there are the details on the three-part plan, which of course, I'll speak about in a moment, and then there is a short summary. An important note is that there are no implementation plans included within the document, but that is recognized within the document as something that must follow. Turning to the three parts of the plan, and I'll speak about each of these in detail, but just to lay it out quickly at the front end, part one was developed by the working group, and it is actions to, well, it is to implement 20 varied actions. Part two was actually not developed by the working group, but rather developed by the government in New Brunswick and the provincial cabinet, and speaks about the creation of a regional management task force. And part three, again, created or developed by the government in New Brunswick, speaks about its commitment to reassess the situation in May of 2020. Turning to the more detail on each part of the plan, part one, the 20 action items. Action item number one is that the city of St. John will address and, and attempt to resolve some of the non-sustainable clauses within our various collective agreements. There are issues such as minimum numbers and no contracting out clauses that prevent or limit the flexibility of the city moving forward. Next, the city of St. John will explore options to better cash flow our contributions in terms of special pension payments. To be clear, the report does not suggest or imply a diminishment in the overall contributions, but rather simply to explore possible ways to better cash flow the requirements. Next, item three is to explore city boundaries and see if this would yield any cost savings. Item four, the government in New Brunswick will invite local government and union representation to develop a proposal for binding arbitration reform, which would, of course, require legislative change. Item five is a tax exemption, not only for our municipal transit facility, but for all municipal transit facilities in the province. For the city of St. John, this would equate to approximately a $300,000 a year cost avoidance. And number six, the province commits to leading a comprehensive review of current property tax policy and any tax-related tools that would benefit the municipalities. Item seven within the report is a recognition by the province of the importance of our population growth framework and efforts to accelerate pilot projects and new initiatives in that regard. Item eight speaks to our desire to leverage St. John energy and to take advantage of potential revenue streams from that, our utility. And therefore, the report commits to the city conducting an independent valuation of St. John energy to, if you will, validate the growth agenda, and depending on the results of that, the government then commits to exploring whatever legislation or other changes may be required to facilitate that growth agenda. Item nine has to do with regional facilities, whereby the province will undertake to introduce legislation to add capital costs to the regional facilities funding formula. To be clear, right now, our outlying municipalities pay towards operating costs, but do not contribute anything to capital costs. Moreover, the local service districts do not contribute to the funding formula at this time, and the changes to the legislation would provide for them to start contributing. Number 10, the accommodation levy has already been completed, in that the province has passed legislation for a mandatory levy on accommodations. This would replace the very successful volunteer levy that our hotel association, working with the city, has had in place for over a decade. The so what out of this mandatory legislation is we estimate anywhere between 300 and 600 to 700,000 dollars a year additional income from that levy. There is also a commitment within the report as item 11, for the province to review the regional services commission model to find improvements. As item number 12, the city of St. John fully recognizes that it can still do more in terms of finding efficiencies, and therefore commits to finding methods by which to have a total target reduction of 3 million dollars, either through reduced expenses or increased revenues towards the overall budget. Item 13, this is already ongoing in that we are conducting a fundamental review of our organizational structure for our city employees to improve effectiveness and identify efficiencies. Item 14, although we already have continuous improvement initiatives ongoing, we will develop an entire continuous improvement framework, including embracing the culture of continuous improvement even more than we do now, which ties directly to item 15. As part of embracing that culture of in continuous improvement, we will invite a third party to come in and conduct an operational audit of all of our operations, processes and procedures, and provide constructive criticism. These audits are extremely expensive, and therefore, seldom affordable by any municipality, ourselves included, and for that reason, the province has agreed to fund this operational audit. Item 16 will be, and it is ongoing at this time, a fundamental review of our economic development framework to ensure that the money that we put towards that is being as best spent as possible. Item 17 is a recognition that we need to continue to work collaboratively with industry to help spur growth and development within our city, and in fact, this year, we have already had several workshops, seminars, symposiums, and initiatives put in place to help spur that growth and ease development challenges. Item 18, for the first time in St. John's history, we will develop and execute by the end of the year, a long-term financial plan for the city. Item 19, we will develop and execute a debt management plan and a wage escalation policy. As mentioned, the debt management plan was just approved by council this week. The wage escalation policy has already been approved by the growth, sorry, by the finance committee, and will be presented to council in the not-too-distant future. And finally, item 20 is to complete the next phase of our asset management plan, so we have a true and good understanding of all of our assets, where we have pressures, and how to address priorities with the deferred maintenance that we have ahead of us. With the action items behind us, we move to part two of the plan, which is the creation or the establishment of a regional management task force, the details of which are shown on this slide, but in essence, its mandate is to identify and agree on arrangements for shared services, service delivery, and shared use of services within the region, and to achieve associated equitable cost sharing. Part three of the plan is a reassessment. In May of 2020, the government has committed that it will review the situation within St. John and make whatever decisions are required at that time. This slide shows the exact wording from the report, and I will pause for a moment to allow people an opportunity to read it. With that is the overview of the plan or the report itself. I'd now like to turn to the staff assessment of that report. First, a general comment. There is no doubt. It is quite clear that this report falls short of the aspirational targets that all members of the working group had at both levels of government when they began this process some 15 months ago. But as clear as it is that it falls short of those aspirational targets, it is equally clear that it is not the status quo, it is not a it is not a step backwards, but a step forward. With that as a general comment, turning to some of the action items. First of all, it is important to note that over half of the action items are city initiatives that are already in progress or plan to start in the not-too-distant future. It is also important to note that some of the action items are relatively minor. For example, removing the property tax from transit facilities will result in a $300,000 savings, which is a far cry from the 12 million that we need, but it is certainly a step in the right direction. There is also a belief amongst the staff that there is tremendous potential within some of these action items, but it is uncertain potential. And allow me to explain through four examples. First of all, the commitment to comprehensive property tax reform is significant and forms a key element of our own white paper. However, the uncertainty comes in in that we do not know the outcomes of that comprehensive tax reform and how much of a benefit there actually will be to the municipalities. The commitment towards exploring binding arbitration is very encouraging and could lead to significant savings in the future. However, here, the uncertainty lies in whether or not the legislation would actually pass. And also, even with changes to the legislation, there is no guarantee. We do not know, of all the considerations that arbiters look at during binding arbitration, how much of an impact the addition of affordability will have in their decision-making. St. John Energy Review. The commitment is to explore the growth agenda, and then if it's of value, make the necessary changes. That in and of itself speaks to its uncertainty. And finally, the Regional Management Task Force has tremendous potential to address and grow, address the challenges in the region, and quite frankly, grow the region. However, the uncertainty comes in that this task force is based on a facilitator and consensus, and therefore, very much open to questions as to what they will be able to achieve. Next, I'd like to simply highlight that most of the commitments within the 20 action items have been discussed in other forms, but it is recognized that this is the first time that there has been a cabinet-endorsed written document on these various items. And finally, and importantly, and this is a quote from the report itself, "The majority of the action items will not yield major results before 2023." Some of the deductions from that assessment include that we believe that all action items, should the report be endorsed, will require detailed implementation plans with firm due dates and milestones, well-defined objectives, and performance measurement criteria. Because of the reality that the major benefits would not be felt until 2023 or beyond, we also believe that the reality is that St. John will be required to plan to address the entirety of the deficit for 2021 and 2022. This will require drastic, impactful, and difficult decisions that will affect the entire community. It will also require that that planning and decisions be made in the very near future, since for all intent and purpose, 2021 is just around the corner from a budgeting point of view if major changes are required. Members of council, that concludes the background brief. In accordance with our bylaws, there was a motion passed in closed session of committee of the whole when this was briefed at the last session, approximately two weeks ago at this time. And that motion is shown here for your consideration. With that, members of council, your worship, that concludes my presentation. Subject to questions, comments that you may have.
Okay. My mic is on, yeah, thank you. Thank you, City Manager. We'll have you maybe come back here. So can we first address any questions to the City Manager? Or folks, yeah. So Deputy, do you have questions for the City Manager? No, okay. Counselor Armstrong, questions for the City Manager? No. Thank you, Counselor Sullivan, for the City Manager?
No.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Merrithew? No, thank you. Okay. I do have a couple of questions, City Manager. Thank you for your presentation. And I don't know if it's to you or it's to the Commissioner of Finance, but could you describe the risk in the agreement? And what I'm talking about is, and I think you highlighted it at a very high level, but what I'm talking about is bankable revenue in this report versus future commitment. So let me get you. Thank you.
I'll start to enumerate the bankable revenue, to use your term, your worship. And maybe the CFO can chime in with others that I may have overlooked. The known bankable revenues within this report are, first of all, the exemption to provincial property tax on municipal transit facilities in the order of approximately $300,000. The second bankable revenue is the changes to the legislation for the regional facilities, which will be a combination of capital costs, which are not part of the operating budget, but also some operating costs with the LSD contributions. And that total amount is approximately $600,000. And forgive me, but I think those are the two actual truly tangible revenues within the action items.
Commissioner, let me just get you a mic. Can you hit your button for me, Kevin? Thank you. Commissioner?
Through, your worship. I guess with respect to risk of the action items in the report, first of all, there are some very significant commitments in the report. And there's some very significant major themes in the report that would not only impact the City of St. John, but also municipalities across the province of New Brunswick. The question you posed regarding risk for the plan, as the City Manager raised earlier, many of the major reforms that are needed and committed to in the plan are for 2022 and beyond, in addition to the fact that the details for each of those major reforms are yet to be determined. So just purely from a financial perspective, if you're asking for financial risk and financial advice, obviously relying solely on the recommendations of the report, given the timing and the timing with respect to some of the action items the city needs to take on itself in regards to collective agreements and things of that nature, the uncertainty itself of the conclusion of those items carries risk, carries risk for the future, for the finances for the City of St. John. So with that, my advice would be that the City of St. John, based on its current cost of services, can no longer afford those services based on the revenues that we reliably, with certainty, can predict we're going to receive in the foreseeable future, and that we're going to have to make some cost adjustments moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and I have one more, City Manager. One more for you. City Manager, when council was briefed previously on the working group, call them action items, and we discussed that as a council, did council place any condition on its, what I would call its approval and principle on those action items? Sorry, I don't know. Have your mic. Sorry, where are you?
You've caught me at a bit of a loss, your worship. I think it's a bit of a leading question. If you could enhance it or elaborate a bit more.
Yeah, so I guess my recollection is that when we discussed this in the past and we talked about at that time what would have been the draft city actions. And I think they're largely what you have on the screen today. And the draft provincial actions, that there was an element to that in terms of what I would call tax reform that was an ask related to that from the province.
You're referring to the bridging strategy?
I would call it tax reform, but yeah.
Yeah. When, as we worked through the various action items and landed on the 18 to 20 that you see before you today, once we came to the realization that the large potential significant change would be 2023 or beyond, and that the City of St. John would have a very significant challenge for the fiscal years of 2021 and 2022, we then started to discuss within the Joint Sustainability Working Group options to deal with that short-term challenge. We did initially focus on offering potential bridging strategies to our counterparts at the provincial level to get us through those years. And one of the bridging strategies then morphed into, hey, this is such a great idea, and I'm paraphrasing, but this is such a great idea, why doesn't it become the first step towards property tax reform? Holistic, comprehensive property tax reform. And it was so suggested within the working group and mentioned to very selected officials, I understand, at both levels of government.
And can you tell us what that is?
The proposal that we put forward is in recognition of the heavy industrial base that we have within the City of St. John and the stress that it puts on our services and on our infrastructure. Although they certainly pay a large chunk of property tax, a proportion of that goes to the province. And our suggestion was, in order to recognize and to compensate for the additional pressures that are put onto our services, police-fire response, for example, and the pressure that is put on our infrastructure, for example, one heavy truck puts the same wear and tear as approximately 10,000 to 18,000 cars. Our suggestion was, as the first step of comprehensive tax reform, to transfer the industrial tax portion of provincial property tax to the city in recognition of those pressures.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Deputy Mayor?
No. I'm in motion.
Oh, I apologize. Sorry, Counselor. And let me turn the deputy. There you go. Apologize.
Thank you, your worship. Appreciate that. First of all, Mr. City Manager, thank you for a very balanced presentation. This council's worked diligently to set St. John on a long-term road to sustainability. Financial discipline through wage escalation policies, debt management policies, capital spending policies, and other like internal policies set the table for the corporate city of St. John to be a very powerful force in the future. We've been smart as a team and developed our own internal reports. I would especially like to mention our own report on taxation, along with our report entitled "Building a Sustainable Future for St. John." Some people call that the White Paper. In this report, the White Paper, we asked all the political parties to respond to our list of items that we felt would benefit us as a city and help us move us towards sustainability. Here's the list of table of contents of our own report. Fair taxation, changing provincial labor legislation, supporting regionalization, supporting the city's roadmap for smart growth and population growth, enabling new revenue streams from St. John Energy, waiving the annual government of New Brunswick assessment charge, funding regional facilities' capital assets, repealing the special assessment practices for Canaport LNG, subsidizing St. John Transit and integrating St. John Transit and Parking Commissions. I remember saying at the time that all of these would be good for the city and any of these would be good for the city, even if one of them were to be implemented. Seven of those 10 items are directly addressed in this report. Yes, some are very early stages, but as the City Manager said, they are a step forward. And we have in writing the provincial commitment to move them forward, while others have been approved by cabinet and that I think went beyond even what we were thinking in 2018. The Regional Facilities Commission changes, for example, not only include capital costs, but also bring the LSDs in for capital and a share of the operating costs. This is worth millions of dollars alone when we replace the roof of Harbor Station in the next few years. I sat on council in 2008, 2009 and watched then-Counselor Peter McGuire lead the city's request for a change in legislation to help us deal with vacant and dilapidated buildings. This one item took years of dialogue between the city and the provincial government to get it through. Well, why? Because the provincial government has a lot of their own priorities to work on, let alone spend their resource time for changes in legislation to help municipalities. In this document, we have commitments for many different legislative changes that will improve the financial position of the City of St. John and help us move forward towards our own sustainable path. I guess I'll finish my opening comments with just one more question to the City Manager. You know, we have been discussing this, Mr. City Manager. And when it was presented, what was our own staff's recommendation with regards to this report?
You'll have to give me a moment. At the time that this was discussed in closed session of council, the staff offered four recommendations. One that I judge has been overtaken by events at this point in time. The four recommendations, in no particular order, but as listed on the slide when we presented to you, was, first of all, that common council endorsed this report, but with reservations, recognizing the uncertainty in the potential and recognizing that there will be no significant reform prior to 2023, and therefore, the city must shoulder the significant burden for 2021 and 22. The second recommendation was that common council insist on detailed implementation plans for all action items with specific due dates and milestones, detailed objectives, and measurable performance indicators. The third recommendation was that common council direct the City Manager to develop plans for approval to address the entirety of the forecasted deficit for 2021 and 2022. And the fourth recommendation, which I judge overtaken by events, is that common council direct the City Manager to develop the city's communication plan for the release of this report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Counselor Armstrong?
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to make my comments real simple. In the 70s, when I was growing up, the population of St. John was over 100,000 people, give or take. Today, it's down to 77,000 people. Today, we're in a serious financial crisis. But we're not down and out. We have to be independent of anybody. This is my own personal thoughts. To be strong is to be independent and not reliable on anybody. That goes for any business in this world. They're reliant on their customers, but they build their customer base. In the seat of St. John, over decades, this problem has been happening for decades. And tonight, it's coming to a head with the sustainability report. I believe in independence. I don't care what the government is, who's in power. The provincial government has the power if they have the will to make any changes they want. But in politics, it's called politics for a reason. I want to get re-elected, whether it's city, provincial, or federal, to make the hard choices you might not get re-elected. Well, guess what? This is a counselor, myself. I don't mind making the hard decisions because it's not, to me, it's not about getting re-elected. We have to make hard choices. The numbers do not lie. Liars figures, figures never lie. We have hard choices to make, and I want to make them independently of anybody holding anything over my decisions, whether the provincial, federal, outside of town. It's our problem. It's the City of St. John's problem. I don't want to hear that we're hamstrung. They're not hamstrung in other cities. We all operate under the same legislation. So to be independent and make your own way is how you create success. In this council, with the help of our Finance Commissioner, in this council, we can create our own success. But there's going to be ramifications making the hard choice and decisions. You have to make these. That's why the provincial government, I believe, is the number 22,000 per person in debt in this province. Why? Because they put it down and make the political decisions to get re-elected. I'm not placing blame because it's been happening forever. It's the system. This council is... This council, we're 3,000 per person. So no one can preach to us. Chris, Pam, sis, I think it's 1,000 or 1,500. That's not the point. The point is, you have to look after yourselves. It's like your own household. If you have a million-dollar home, you lose your job, you got to sell the house, or you got lots of money in bank to keep it. We're not down and out. We have 156 million in revenue. We have more in this city to offer than anybody in the country. And people say, what do you mean, Counselor? We got an oil refinery. We got a nuclear plant. We got an LNG plant. We got pulp mills. We are the industrial base of this province. And for all my life, we've been sending the taxes to Fredericton to build the rest of the province. Our representation, we send to Fredericton, is the reason we don't get our fair share in taxes. Who do you blame? Is it the provincial government's fault? No, it's our, we have to have stronger voices. Get our fair share.
Counsel, I'm just going to time-check you there and...
Okay, thank you very much. I'll finish when I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Merrifield.
Oh, thank you, Worship. First of all, let me sincerely thank everyone that's had their hands on this paper. There has been some Herculean efforts put into it. It's been a great conversation so far. It really has been. I believe it's a conversation that needs to continue, okay? Needs to continue for the benefit of the municipalities of this province and not only the city of St. John. But with that, let me give you just a little bit of take on the paper myself. So, the city manager stole some of my thunder with his presentation, but I'm going to continue anyway, sir. Of the 20 action items that were mentioned in the paper, the city of St. John is currently doing about half of them. And I'll quickly go over them as the city manager spoke to it already. Collective agreements. We're looking at that. We've got a wage escalation policy that has been written and gone through Finance Committee and hasn't been accepted at council, but it's on its way. Special payments, pension payments. Council passed a motion recently, spending money to investigate it. Population growth, we're looking at that and have been looking at that with our economic agencies. Accommodation levy, it's been here in the city of St. John for some time. It's going to be province-wide and it'll be a little higher. Operating budget initiatives. We've had continuous improvement for the city for a while. There's $2.5 million hard dollar savings annually, going on $3 million right now. Organizational structural change, again, with continuous improvement. And the city manager has said that there'll be a review of all of our ABCs. Long-term financial plan. The Finance Committee, along with the Finance Department and Mr. Fudge, have already stated that we'll do a two-year, a five-year, and a 10-year plan. Debt management and wage escalation. Again, Finance Committee has done six new policies in this term. Debt management's one of them. Wage escalation is about to come to council. Asset management plans, our good friend Samir is doing a heck of a job on that. It's still a document in work, but we are looking at that. What I think the paper is missing and addresses it, but what I think it's missing is I'm calling them the big four, okay? And they are arbitration, shared services, fair taxation or municipal reform, and St. John Energy. So if I can go over those just briefly as well. Arbitration. The paper we just looked at states that fire wages have gone up in the last 15 years, 72%. Police wages, 67%. CPI by 27.5%. And I can tell you that citizens' wages in the city of St. John have not even kept up to CPI. There are possible fixes for binding arbitration, I believe, right now. You could look at our old wage policy, escalation policy that will come shortly to council. I think we cap that to CPI, or we cap it to the amount of money percentage-wise that the income of the municipality's gone up. Shared services. I know there is a regional management task force, okay? I know they've met already and will continue to meet. And I wish them all the luck, but I don't see anything there. If it took us anywhere between 16 to 17 months not to come up with a decision on arenas, it looks like that's a long, long-term plan. Fair taxation and municipal tax reform. I sincerely believe the city of St. John doesn't get its fair share of taxation from all, for a number of entities. You, yes. I would, I will continue.
Yep. So, Counselor, I'm marking the speakers down. We'll try to rein folks in here and I won't limit anybody else to, I mean, this is an important discussion where, or not tonight, I should have started by saying, look, we have a procedural bylaw of three minutes each, twice. I think this discussion deserves, we're not going to have 10 shots each, but I'm watching time and we'll try to, we'll be very fair in giving folks some time. Thank you.
Yeah. Should I continue?
Yes, please, yep.
Thank you.
So are we suspending the municipal bylaw?
So...
Fair taxation. I don't believe that city of St. John gets its fair taxation from a number of areas. We don't get it from the federal government. The federal government pays something called PILT, Payment and Low Taxes, the city of St. John. But I can tell you that the federal government buildings and the port itself are very, very undervalued. And when you think about way back when, 25, 30 years ago, the port had its own police department. Now that's downloaded on us. And how many times have we gone to see AIM over there lately? Industry. Industry, might say, that pays enough taxes, and that's a discussion that should be had, but we don't get our fair share of it. When the hospital assessed by Service New Brunswick is assessed more than the refinery, both pulp and paper mills, Canaport LNG, Moosehead, and the storage tanks all put together, then I think that needs to be looked at very hard. And from the province, it's well, as well. We don't get enough from the province as well. They collect a vast amount of property tax in this, from the municipalities. Kitchen and Slack, okay, an organization that doesn't have an axe to grind, as far as I'm concerned, said the province should not be in the municipal property tax game. They've got many, many ways to raise revenue and they shouldn't be there. And the city manager spoke to, just in this meeting, an idea that we brought to them by sharing throughout the whole province some industrial tax revenue. And finally, St. John Energy. In the report, it says St. John Energy is our asset, but we can either sell it nor receive a dividend off it without legislation. And it seems to me that could be one of the things, the goose that lays the golden egg, but we just can't get at it. So again, I thank everyone for the report, I sincerely do. But there's too much in this report that's down the road too far, and it's intangible. And we can't budget with intangibles. Thank you, sir, for the extended time.
You only get so much time. You just used a bunch of yours. Deputy Mayor.
Well, I just want to start, Your Worship, by saying thank you to everyone from the city and the province that was on the working group. And a special thank you to the Minister Jeff Carr, local government and environment. You're a brave man tonight to be here. And there's a lot of MLAs and ministers and other members of council from other areas in the audience. And I just want to say, there are some good things in this report. There's no question about that. But there's a lot of reviews and changes to arbitration, tax reform, changes to legislation, and they're all in there saying, well, we may do those down the road because they all take time and they're not done as of yet. And we haven't got that time. We've got enough money to the end of 2020, and that's it. We haven't got enough money to balance our budget in 2021. So that's the bottom line. That's why we're all here tonight. And where are we going to get that money? If it doesn't come from our taxes through the province, then the city is going to have to restructure, and every department will be included. And what happens when you restructure? Well, you lose services to the citizens, but you also lose people. And there's no question, we got $10 million to make up. There's no way we can get that money unless the province maybe decides to do tax reform early and they take, what the city manager was speaking about, the $8 million from heavy industry tax, which is our money, really, because it was collected in this city and we send it to Fredericton. And we don't get enough money back from Fredericton, and that's the provincial government, I should say, not Fredericton. And it doesn't matter what parties in power, it's happened for a number of years, whether it's the liberals or the PCs. And that's the whole thing. Now you're talking about, well, maybe we'll do tax reform. Well, let me tell you something. It took 10 years, over 10 years, I think, for the province to do the changes in the Municipalities Act. So to say we're going to have tax reform completed by 2022 or 2023, probably not going to happen. But if you don't help the city out now, like we probably before the end of 2019 have to decide what we're going to do. Our personnel, we can't tell them one day, well, you're not here tomorrow, you know, or we'll have a number of lawsuits coming in that we won't be able to handle. So that's what's going to happen to the city of St. John, and there's no other way to look at it. We've got $10 million to make. It's a very unhealthy thing to have to happen. And I just want to touch a couple things other in the report that I really don't care that much about. This regional management task force, well, that could work if you put people on it that first had the expertise in how municipalities work and how to look at issues for regionalization, and also put people on it that work together. Everyone sitting around here and everyone in the public knows that the same members for this new task force are the same members that are on the Regional Service Commission as we speak and have been there for at least the last seven years or almost that time. And I'm not saying they don't like one another, but they just don't seem to be able to get their act together to come out with any good solutions. And if you can prove me wrong in that, then you should speak to me because I wouldn't know what you were talking about, because it hasn't happened. So why would I put a committee together with people that really can't kind of work together? No, I wouldn't do that. And then they have two other people up that's putting on, I think they work in the premier's office, but they don't have the expertise of municipalities or anything or knowledge about regionalization. There's all kinds of people in this province that could have been put on that committee and they would have had the knowledge and they could have done something. And then, the other thing on that committee is, it says in the report that they have to have a report in by the end of March 2020, but it doesn't say what happens if they don't have the report in. Do they, is it mandated then by the province that they're going to do something? It doesn't say that in the report. It's just the same as this report that we're speaking about was due on January 1st, 2019. It's now in July, and we're dealing with it right here. Now, I'm not blaming anybody for having the report being late, but they were allowed to allow the report to just run over. The other item, if I have time, I want to speak about regional facilities. I've been on that commission for a number of years, and I know the member from Grand Bay is here tonight, and he can, you know, speak for himself. But, you know, we talk about the operational cost. And ever since I've been on that committee, there's a reluctance, to some degree, from the other municipalities to share the cost of the operating. Maybe not all municipalities, but some. And I'll just give you an example, Counselor Merrifield on it also. This past September, the Aquatic Center came in for their budget. They wanted $860,000. The commission didn't want to give them that money. So they said, no, we're going to cut it by 100,000. This is operating now. So we gave them 760,000 and something. Less than two months ago, the Aquatic Center was at this council in closed session, and we took it to open. They needed $75,000 for 2019 to be able to pay their staff and to operate that facility. So these facilities cost money. So if the municipalities right now can't agree to pay the operating costs, the capital costs are going to be a lot worse because the city of St. John, the Aquatic Center, for instance, was started in 1985. We haven't been able to spend the maintenance money on it that we should have for each year, and it's gone downhill, and it needs a lot of work. So, good luck to that. We'll see that because the government, you're going to have to either mandate that or convince the other municipalities that they got to help to pay those facilities. This is nothing in the report that says, we're going to mandate that. We're going to tell you, you have to do it. You're just saying you're going to put a committee together and they're all going to work together. Well, you know, these committees don't always work together. Anyway, that's my first start on it. Thank you.
Round one. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, Counselor McKenzie, please.
Thank you, Worship. I'd like to start off by, you know, thanking everybody that was involved in this, the provincial staff and municipal staff. And I know there's a lot of hard work that went into this. I guess from my perspective, there's a number of good things that come out of this. But the expectation that I had was that we would find common ground so that between now and 2023, you know, the city wouldn't collapse. And I think that what I'm seeing now is there's no common ground there. You know, when we look at something like St. John Energy, you know, and they talk about, well, we'd have to change legislation and we'd have to, you know, look at that. I remember not too long ago that David Kuhn from the Green Party put forward a motion to the legislature to amend the Electrical Act. Amendments that would make it possible for St. John Energy to do what they need to do to, you know, help the city out. And that motion, you know, didn't go through. You know, it had support of a lot of legislature, but not the government. And there was another motion, we talk about fair taxation and property tax and stuff like that. There was a motion that went to the legislature, you know, that, you know, and it wasn't about raising taxes, lowering taxes, or anything. It was about allow a fair hearing where everyone can come together, you know, all stakeholders, and tell their story and allow members to decide whether things need to change or not. And that was voted down. So when I look at it, I think, you know, as hard as we try, it's not working out. I guess what my question to the city manager is, I guess the reality is here, one way or another, what sort of cuts are we looking at? Can you put them up on the screen for me? I'd like to see what it is we're looking at when we have to make these cuts in the near future.
Thank you. City Manager?
Your Worship to the Counselor, no, I can't put them up on the screen because clearly we've not done the detailed work, nor have we had any substantive discussions with council on a list. What I can tell you is $10 to $12 million change to our operating budget is significant. I will give you some examples, some illustrative examples, of what would need to be on that list in order to make up $10 to $12 million. To be clear, I'm not saying these are them. I'm saying these are illustrative of what needs to be on that list. And if I could say that five times, I would, this evening.
Your time.
But for example, you would need to do a significant reduction to transit since we contribute a very hefty subsidization to transit. You would have to address your protective services and a reduction there due to the percentage of the budget that they consume. Community grants would probably be, I hate to use the term, something we could no longer afford. Subsidizations for recreation would, for all intent and purpose, probably have to cease. There would be increased user fees for residents that would have to be considered, such as garbage collection, et cetera. There would certainly be additional non-user fees across the city for things such as parking, toll taxes, or things along that line. There would most definitely need to be considered workforce reductions and/or pay freezes. And, you know, the last one I have on this very rough list, which probably is illustrative but drives home the point, there would without doubt be more potholes and more ice on our roads.
Okay. So that just gives people an idea of what we're looking at when we don't have, you know, the tools necessary to get back some of that $45 million... some of that 45 million dollars that we're giving to the province, or we're getting 10 back, whatever it is. You know, everybody's going to be hit. It's a fait accompli. There's no getting around it. I mean, we've been down the road, unless the government tomorrow decides, you know what? We've learned a few things last night and we need to make a few changes. It's a fait accompli. So we're going to do the heavy lifting. As the previous speaker said, there's over 50% of the items on that list that St. John is doing now, we're going to do. And that includes the list that the city manager just spoke about. And basically, the reason we're doing it is because we don't have legislation changes that were proposed for St. John Energy, for fair taxation, and there's others. Now, having said all of that, that doesn't mean that everything in that report's bad. You know, there's some levies that's going to be collected in other cities that we're currently collecting in St. John for tourism. That's wonderful, you know, and there's, there's a lot of other things that are good. But the things that are missing in that report are more important to St. John right now, today and tomorrow than what's in the report. So that's my first round, sir. I hope it doesn't go too long.
Thank you. Counselor Hickey.
Thank you, Worship. First, I'll start by just thanking both the provincial and municipal team that came together to really put this report together. For the, what I can only assume is tens of thousands listening at home, I'd like to recognize certainly Minister Carr in the room, as well as I believe I saw Minister Holder and the Attorney General as well, Andrea Anderson-Masson.
And Emily Shepherd, I think, is here as well.
And of course, anybody I didn't get a chance to see. It means a lot to have you here this evening. And what that says to me is no matter the way we vote on this, no matter what the decision at this table is tonight, you're willing to stay there and you're willing to continue this discussion and really stand up for the greater St. John region. And, and at the end of the day, I think what it all means is that we're here to fight for our constituents and we're here and we all want what's best for the city. On August 14th in 2018, I was not counsel at the time, but parties presented to the council during the provincial election. And I certainly paid attention. And the response from now Premier Higgs was clear. The city can no longer be the poor cousin of the province. And we made, and many commitments were made, and most of which is upheld in the sustainability report to an extent. What was seen from the sustainability report and what was presented to council as well was that staff said we should support it, but there were reservations and significant ones. There's a two-year gap where we can't meet the budgetary needs of this city that go unrecognized in, in this, in this report. So there are two decisions we're faced with. We can accept the report and say, but we have these reservations and they're big ones. Or we can say, we're not accepting this report because of these reservations. And to me, when you want those reservations to have teeth, when you want them to have weight, when you want every single person around this horseshoe to be able to get these key deliverables across the line before the end of our mandate and before the end of the provincial mandate, then we need to make sure that that timeline is readdressed and that the reservations that we have carry significant weight. And my concern is rooted in those reservations. Property tax reform, binding arbitration, St. John Energy, the regional task force. Many of these long-term commitments within the report are based on revenues that we won't see until 2023. Initiatives that won't take place until the last year of this provincial government's mandate. Call me skeptical, but I don't have a huge amount of confidence in that happening. I've, in the two months I've been on council, I can't count the number of times I've heard it from different counselors around the horseshoe saying that we need to step up to our financial issues in this city. We need to take ownership of them and we're not going to pass them along down to the next, into the next mandate. We're not going to pass them along to the next council. We're going to deal with them in this mandate and we're going to make sure that they're dealt with now. This report does not do that. Those long-term key financial issues that we need to deal with in the province are not being dealt with until, until 2022, which leaves us with a two-year revenue gap that we're passing on to the next council. A commitment that I think everyone around this horseshoe has made several times in saying that we are not willing to do this. That is something that is off the table. We need to deal with these issues now. You know, and that, and that leaves me in steadfast support of property tax reform, binding arbitration, St. John Energy and a regional task force. You know, our commitment needs to be rooted in something that is before 2022, 2023. In 2020, St. John will face a fiscal cliff. So that means 2020, 2021, 2022, we're faced with cutbacks. We're faced with road repair that can't get done. We're faced with municipal jobs that we're going to loss, lose. We're going to face, we're faced with splashpads that can't open. We're faced with kids that won't get programming in our priority neighborhoods. And that it's consistently on those, these cutbacks. What will happen in the list that the city manager provided, these cutbacks are consistently faced on our priority neighborhoods. As a council that represents three of five priority neighborhoods in this city, I can't in good faith endorse this report. I can't do it. Because when we are struggling so much in our priority neighborhoods, when, 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 when the South End has a poverty rate of 48%, I can't in good faith endorse this report. And I think, as I said before, every counselor around this table needs to be committed to saying that we will not pass the buck to the next mandate. That's the big thing coming out of this report, is we're changing councils, we're changing mandates and we're saying that all of these long-term solutions that are coming up in 2022, according to the, according to the report, we're passing that along to the next council. Good luck. Here you go. That leaves them with two years of budgetary cuts of issues that they can't meet. And, and, and I think that's, that's, that's the big position where I stand. You know, I, one of my, when I, when I was running for council during, during one of our debates, one of my, someone running against me had a great quote and I've used it a few times. And it was in reference to the, the budget exercise that was, that's available on St. John's website. And it was simple. It said, you know, when, when we reach that cliff, you know, she, she, she put it this way. When I look at what I had to do to the budget, I saw a city that I knew I wouldn't want to live in. And I think that's a reality we need to face here, is that if we endorse this report, are we willing to make the cuts that need to happen in that time? I can't do it in good faith. I can't do it in good faith to the kids in the South End, to the kids on the East Side, to the kids in Lower West who are going to lose their programming. They're going to lose their splashpads. They're going to lose the infrastructure there around them. And that puts that all in jeopardy for me. And I cannot in good faith do it. Now, I hope in, I hope in response to this, the province stays at the table. We need to stay at the table on this. We need to continue the conversation on this. We need to make sure that that timeline is shortened and we need to go from there.
Okay, Counselor, I'm going to call you there. Thank you. Counselor Sullivan, please.
Has everyone had first go? Everyone who wants to have first go?
Yeah, you, well, you spoke to your motion, but you haven't had a first go. Is this your first go?
Yep. Thank you. From, from listening around the table, it's almost like in my mind, we're rewriting the musical Oliver. Oliver ate his bowl of porridge and then went and asked for more. We've got a full bowl of porridge, okay, half-full, if your glass is half-full. And we're still asking for more and we haven't eaten the porridge we got yet. There's nothing bad in this report. There is nothing in this report that hurts the city of St. John. I agree, half the items in this report we're working on and we've been working on, but that's what it should be. It should be a partnership. We should be working on our half. And we're going to have to work on our half whether we endorse this report or not. So we might as well get started. Why can't we meet the budgetary needs of the city? That is a great question. And passing the buck to the next council, we can't just keep going back and asking other levels of government for more money. The 2012, 2013 council solved a dire problem in the city of St. John in partnership with the provincial government when they changed pension plans. Part of that deal that the city of St. John signed on for was to pay approximately $10 million extra per year until 2028. And I'm sure there were discussions at that time with the province of could somebody else pay this $10 million? And the council of the day said, no, we will agree because it's that important in order to fix our, our pension issue, that the council of the city of St. John in our annual budget would put $10 million towards the pension deficit until 2028. And here we are in 2019 saying, do you mind just for a few more years, given us that $10 million that we said a few years ago we would pay every year? One of the reasons, I mean, certainly the city manager did a great job of illustrating the gap between our wages and our revenue, which is exacerbating the problem. But at the end of the day, the council of the city of St. John said we were going to make a $10 million payment every year. We need to take ownership of our financial destiny. I agree with Counselor Hickey. We need to make plans so we are not just handing this to 2021 and saying, the next council, it's elected next May, by the way, here's your gift, figure this out. We need to start figuring this out now for the long term. But that's where the finance committee is working on our long-term plans. You know, the, the, the big input into that long-term plan now is going to be, are we doing it by ourselves? Or is that input into the long-term plan, we know 2021, 2022 are going to be hard, except we'll have about a million dollars-ish out of this plan that is another million we'll have to find if we don't endorse the plan, with the knowledge that the other things are moving forward? And I'll tell you, I mean, council is heard, especially around St. John Energy. I made sure when all the political parties were in front of us, if they didn't talk about it, that was the one question I asked everybody. And I am perfectly happy holding anybody's feet to the fire on any commitment they have made in front of us. And what I see in this report, is it everything? Is it the details? Is it everything laid out? Definitely not on a lot of items. Is it a move forward? Is it a commitment in writing from a sitting provincial government to move forward on all of these items? All of those items are moving forward if we accept this report. The operational audit, which is interesting, nobody's really talked about much. In 2010, way back in the day, none of you were here, but I was here before my hiatus, we were working on, council of the day, doing one audit of a year of one department because we knew we wanted to get better, but all we could afford was to do one per year. Here we have in a document, an offer to fund all of it. In 2010, if the provincial government had said, city of St. John, we know this is something you want to do, here we'll fund all of it? I'll tell you, the council of the day would have said, that's great because one of our priorities back then was we wanted to get better at the job we were doing. And if we could find somebody else to pay for us to help us get better, that's even better, better. There is nothing in this document that says, if we endorse it tonight, done, we don't have any more conversations with the provincial government about anything. In my mind, this is the commitment here and the conversations keep going. Except we have something to talk about. Knock on the door. We've done our, our St. John Energy review as requested in the document. Here it is, we're ready to talk about next steps with St. John Energy. You know, it's not in the line in the document, but certainly in the discussion in the document. It, it talks about the objective being to be able to flow revenues from St. John Energy through the city of St. John. And there is nothing bad, all of this is good. I think if we had thought when we had the white paper out that some of these things would be on the table, it amazes me that here we are a year and a half later saying, you know, all those things, seven of those things we wanted in the white paper are in writing from the provincial government. All we have to do is say yes. And they are started. I don't know where we've come in 18 months, but thanks, Worship. That's my good first kick.
Thank you. Let me catch my list here. Counselor Casey, please.
Thank you, Worship. I'm a little torn on this. I can go either way, to be honest with you. Like Counselor Sullivan said, I mean, there's nothing really bad in this. There's nothing that's really tying us to anything. All the stuff that, you know, the city was going to say we're going to do in this, we were going to do anyway, basically. So, you know, it's, it's not bad. It's not great. It's a pretty typical document, if you ask me. A lot of hopes and prayers. You know, and I wasn't expecting much anyway. I don't know, I don't know why anyone would expect really anything, to be honest, to, to, to like bridge the gap or, you know, something that will happen right away that would take away our $12 million deficit or whatever. I don't know what world you're living in, but I never expected that anyway. So, you know, so this is pretty good, if you ask me. And so a lot of the stuff, you know, like binding arbitration, you know, the wording is pretty laxed, to be honest. And I highly doubt anything's going to come of it anyway because I'm, if you haven't noticed, I'm not exactly, you know. Basically, I, you know, I, I don't believe the government's going to do much anyway. You know, that's, that's mainly the reason why I vote for the losing party every single time. But, you know, the public transit, I think public transit is the way to go anyway. So, I mean, that's good. Wish could go further. That would certainly help with our roads if people actually took public transit and not everybody have a car. So there's, you know, there's some good things in there. There's, you know, if I do support it, it would be with some, you know, certainly with some reservations, some big ones. Because, you know, even on a lot of this stuff, I don't really see much coming of it, to be honest. I don't, I have no faith that the government's going to do much. But if it does, you know, good. But I was expecting to cut, you know, anyway. So, you know, and a lot of it, you know, the, the provincial stuff is, you know, would be good for the, the other cities, which is probably the only reason why I would support it anyway. Because, you know, I, I say if they don't get help, you know, a couple of decades down the road, they could be in the same position we are in right now. If, if growth falters, you know, Moncton, Fredericton, if they don't get population growth, they'll be, they'll be right here with you, asking the government for help, just like we are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Norton, please.
Thank you, Worship. City Manager, can you, can you just rewind the tape there a little bit? In terms of, in terms of money on the table, I guess I'm just looking for you to quantify, do some, do some quick addition here. If you were to look at the tax break on municipally-owned transit facilities, the levies, I know it's difficult for you to quantify exactly what, what an external audit in terms of an operational review, that 360 operational review regarding our operations would cost. But I, I beg you to kind of give a back-of-the-envelope figure based on your experience, what something like that would cost based on our side. Could you just kind of, what, what kind of, what kind of dollars are on the table? Could you just kind of, what kind of, what kind of dollars are on the table first year out of the gate with a, with a report like this?
Your worship to the councillor, it is certainly a difficult question to answer precisely, but let me once again try to quantify some of it. Exemption of the transit facility from municipal property tax, sorry, from provincial property tax is $300,000. The estimated value of the changes to the regional facilities legislation will total in the neighborhood of $600,000 to $650,000, with a portion of that being operating, the remainder of it being capital. An operational audit of the scope that we envision for a city of this size and an organization as complex as ours is, is certainly a minimum of a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Can you, can you add on top of that, city manager, because I may be, I may be wrong in terms of my assessment. As it relates to the hotel levy, is, what are the, what are the additional dollars that we're looking at?
So, to give you the rough numbers on the hotel levy, our volunteer levy that we've had in place for just over a decade generates, this past year, I'm going to speak in very round figures.
That's fine, please.
Generates approximately a million dollars. The city contributes approximately a million dollars to tourism. So in essence, there is $2 million that goes towards our entity known as Discover S.J. for tourism in any given year. So again, volunteer levy in the neighborhood of a million dollars. The estimates, I'm changing it from a voluntary levy to a mandatory levy, so we capture the outliers who are not currently paying. The estimate, and again, it would depend on occupancy of hotel rooms, obviously, it can be anywhere between, depending on who you speak to, you'll hear numbers anywhere between $300,000 and $700,000 a year. Extra.
Thank you, thank you. That's good. So there's dollars there. Year over year, I might add, I would, I kind of want to have a sidebar conversation with councillor Reardon, what does a new transit bus cost?
A new transit bus is probably around $450,000.
Okay, so we're, year over year, the tax savings alone on that facility will help contribute to the purchase of, of new fleet. I know, I know going back over the last seven years, you know, that you, you will always get the commission coming saying, look, we want to buy, buy a couple new buses, and it's always a struggle. It's always a struggle. There's, there's dollars there for that. Those are dollars we don't have to look for anymore. There's lots of conversations about, around the table, it's interesting listening. One of the things, one of the reoccurring themes is, is heavy lifting, heavy work. Fair enough. You know, from my perspective, there's, there's going to be heavy lifting regardless of how this vote goes tonight. But I, I can tell you, if I'm moving a sofa in my living room, I want help moving it on the other end. And that's what we have here tonight. We have help on the other side. Thank you to the members that are present from the, from the ledge today. We've got ministers, I know we had the house leader the other evening, we've got minister Carr, we've got government officials, we've got business, we've got community, we've got councillors from outside neighborhoods and communities, we have the union of municipalities, we have the cities of New Brunswick that have come out and endorsed this report. Well, that's come out, but the mayor, Mayor Mashe came out, he was, he didn't mince words. So did the union of municipalities. We talk an awful lot about collaboration and about working in tandem, pushing and pulling together. Here's a great opportunity to do it, especially when those associations that we interface on a regular basis are endorsing something and encouraging us to support a document like this, because they know it just doesn't benefit St. John, greater St. John, Southern New Brunswick, it benefits New Brunswick as a whole. But thank you to those members present here today. If you had any doubt regarding the support that we have at the provincial level, I just think their representation, their presence here this evening, it should cast a large amount of doubt on that. The work that's gone into this working group report is certainly symbolic, symbolic of that. And I think it was councillor Sullivan that said the other evening, it's, it's better, you know, it's better to get it done right than get it done quick. And I'm glad it's here, and from my perspective, it's done right. You know, the people I represent understand that nothing is free, and that a helping hand and hard work are two of those critical factors that can help change your circumstances, whether personal, whether business, whether in government. And this report offers both, from my perspective, and opportunity to receive much-needed support from our provincial partners, and a program to apply hard work at both levels that can help supercharge St. John and the greater area for the betterment of all of New Brunswick. You know, I would remind this council, at least in my, in my time here, that this is the most we've received from any government, and it provides a legal, methodical starting point. You know, simply said, we get this done, and then we move on to the next thing, and that's how you get things done. The question you must ask yourself tonight, prior to this vote, it's not if this report is good enough for you, it's not, does it meet your personal expectations, it's not, does it fall short of your individual taste, goals, or aspirations? The important question to ask would be, is the city of St. John, the greater St. John area, and the province of New Brunswick, better off with this plan or not? So yes or no? The answer for me is clearly yes. We're better off with this plan than not. I'm not willing to take a step back or endorse the status quo by rejecting this report this evening. I will embrace it, work to get the action plans done, and then we move on to the next things.
The councillor is going to stop.
No worries, I'm stopped.
Yep, thank you, sir. Okay, one sec. You wanted, sorry, I've got one more around one. Okay, councillor Strobridge.
Your worship, I would, I would beg, if we are, if we're going to keep precise time, that we either suspend the procedural bylaw, if not, my clock is in error, and what you have going with some of the other members is different than what I'm recording. So we either suspend...
So, so I just gave you the most time of any speaker, councillor Norton.
Well, that's up for debate.
But I don't, we're not going to do another round of eight minutes each.
Are we going to suspend the procedural bylaw or not?
I'll move that review. We'll just stick to three minutes and second round.
Okay, so you've moved it, do we have a second round? So there's a motion to move to suspend the bylaw, do we have a second round? Okay, thank you, we'll keep going, councillor. Yeah, we're, we're at three minutes, yep. Councillor Strobridge.
Thank you, your worship. I'm not going to debate with council on whether we should or shouldn't endorse the document. I'm going to do my best to not repeat everything and all the excellent points that have been made on both sides of the table. First, I'd like to say thank you very much to everyone who worked on this. Simple, I, I am okay with endorsing the document. Again, a lot of points have been made that it doesn't contain everything that we wanted, but I think that's, it just doesn't contain everything that we wanted right now. I understand that things take time. The provincial government and the people who work at the provincial government, I understand process, I face it every day here at this level. Simple is something as simple as maybe installing some traffic calming measures in a specific neighborhood, that has to go through the process. And I understand that this has to go through the process too. I think we are better off with it than without it. I just have one comment about the regional management task force that is included in this report. It is my opinion respectfully that there should be no politicians made up on that committee whatsoever. The politicians, and I am one, we are subjected to public pressure, sometimes it's about the popular vote, not necessarily the right one, and this new regional management task force being made up of respectfully, the mayors and the LSD representation, they are going to be biased because they have to represent their communities. I think the politicians should be taken out of it. It should be staffed with people who could care less about winning elections or not. That's just in my opinion respectfully to, to the minister in here tonight, Jeff Carr. That's just my opinion. Thank you very much, sir. I guess my, my question would be to our city manager, if he can even answer it, which I don't know if he can, because I can't. If common council does not endorse this, this document that we are debating or talking about tonight, what will happen?
Your worship to the councillor, the short answer is, I don't know. We have not had those discussions within the joint sustainability working group, and therefore I really can't comment on what would happen if this council chose not to endorse the report.
And, and I can't?
I could speculate, and clearly, in closed session, I offered some of that speculation in the form of a, a report to council, but that was speculation.
Sure, absolutely, and I can't answer that either. So to, to those listening from the province of New Brunswick, I endorse the document, and if this council as a governing body tonight votes to not, I hope that you will continue moving forward with what's in the document, not only for the benefit of St. John, but for other municipalities in, in the city, in the province of New Brunswick. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you councillor. I think everyone has done a round. City manager, you wanted to clarify?
Your worship to all members of council, I was asked a question, and upon reflection, I do not believe I gave an adequate answer. The question was, how would we address the $10 to $12 million deficit of 2021 and 2022? And I gave you an illustrative shopping list of the sorts of cuts that may need to be considered. For the record, the staff is working very hard on alternative options other than cuts, in terms of perhaps pursuing additional revenue streams and other clever ideas that may offset the requirement for cuts. To be clear, there would still be cuts, but perhaps there is ways to lower the threshold. I am not at liberty, I am not prepared to speak about any of those specific examples in open session this evening, because there's a great deal of negotiation, financial considerations, contractual considerations, et cetera, that would all need to be discussed in closed session prior to coming to open session. But it would be irresponsible of your staff to take an approach that we will address this purely through cuts, because cuts kill growth, and clearly we would wish to try to avoid that to whatever extent is possible.
Okay, thank you. Oh, it is? Oh, you're not showing up here? Okay, let me, oh, I apologize councillor, let me, you're not showing on the list, but let me pull you up manually here. There you go.
Thank you, Worship. Yes, listen, I thank everyone who's had input into this document. It shows leadership, it shows vision, it shows lots of things, there's, it's all good in there. I guess for me, when I look at it, there's two things that, that I go, I keep going back to. Our problem statement, which says that the city of St. John has a structural deficit despite having the highest tax rate of any municipality in the province and a significant industrial base. And our goal statement, that by 2021, and preferably sooner, the city of St. John will have eliminated its structural deficit and be on a path of sustainable growth such that it is in a position to significantly reduce its tax rate over time. So I guess to get this, I have my statement, and then my goal statement, I need action. And I'm missing, I feel like that's what this is missing, and I know that with the governments right now, it's not a majority government, et cetera, and maybe there isn't, it isn't a time for decisive mandates, I don't know, but I, I feel like I need a little bit more than that. I would, one bone even. When I went through this, everybody's mentioned a lot of things, but I do commend the province for taking the, the property taxes, it's not going to solve our problem, off of transit, but we're the only province that does have property taxes on transit, and it's probably about 9,000 service hours a year, so that's significant. And right now, the city spends over $6 million annually towards transit, it's an over $10 million service to provide, and if you've ever ridden a bus, you'll see that it's mostly poverty on the bus. So when we have to make those cuts, it's devastating for poverty, because the bus is what gives people their independence, and they can go get groceries, they can go to jobs. I mean, we, we struggle with that, I'm on transit, of trying to provide routes available in the evenings so that people can take, can take minimum wage jobs in, out at the malls or wherever, so that's, that's a tough one. But I do appreciate that fact that the province has taken, has taken that property taxes off there. I guess I see St. John Energy as more of pursue a new revenue streams, and I would have liked to have seen that, that's just a stroke of the pen for that legislation for us. It would mean, it would be huge for us. But when I look at this document, it says in here, that evaluation of the growth agenda for St. John Energy, we need to include any implications for NB Power and for private sector interests. So I guess for us, like, I don't see why we would have to look at that, and NB Power should be doing their own thing to keep themselves afloat, whatever they have to do, and I don't know what their situation is, and that's their business, it's not mine. And for private sector, the fossil fuel industry is alive and well in St. John, so I'm not concerned about them either, so I'm not sure why that's in there. Some of the other things that I have on my list here is, is long-term financial planning. We've been doing that, we tried to do it on, on transit, and we have done that with the help of, of the city and finance department. But long-term financial planning is difficult when you don't know what your budget's going to be, and you need a concrete number. So I'm not even a big fan of property tax based on assessed value, because that's still subjective and nebulous to a certain extent for me. I'd love to see property tax based on something more concrete, like your land, the size of your land, the frontage of your land, something, and have the different rates. But growth can't happen with the property taxes the way they are, because it's devastating for small businesses. So all, a lot of these things that are in here are dependent on changing our tax reform. And I know that's not going to happen next year, I know it's not going to happen overnight, I know arbitration can't happen fast, but there are some things that I felt could be done. And so I'd like to, I don't, I don't know where I'm going with this either. It's, it is, it is hopeful in a lot of ways, but those actions really needed to have been aligned, I feel, for us to ensure that we can get onto a path of sustainability. And when I look at the municipalities act, it needs to be reformed, it's over 60 years old, but prior to that act, St. John was sustainable and was alive and well. So maybe we need more autonomy. If the province is overworked with legislation, if we had some more autonomy, we could do our own thing, and maybe that's what we need to do, maybe that's what all municipalities need to do, is to make themselves sustainable and self-sufficient as we go forward in changing our own legislation. Anyways, that's my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that's all of our, at least all of our first round folks, so now we're going to be more succinct, and we're going to be three, three minutes, please. Councillor Merrithew.
Thank you, sir. I just want to go back to the beginning, so back in the fall of 2017, the city was implementing a very tough budget for 18. We were offered a $20 million bridging strategy, and we took it, and a working group that would meet to deliver by January 19, January 2019, real reform, so that we don't have to cut our budgets. So we reversed our budgets then, and allowed the working group to make presentations to the government. And we didn't use all the money in 18, I don't believe we'll use all that bridging money in 19, and I'm not really sure about 20 anymore. The province penned the sustaining S.J. report, which they say the majority of action items will not have significant yield until 2023. I sincerely believe the recommendations fall short of the intent of that working committee. And one other thing I believe in is that I don't believe this council wants to ask for any more porridge. We want to be able to make our own porridge. That's what we want, we're not in charge of our own destiny. This document, the way it lies, doesn't allow us to do that. When it does, okay, I have full faith in the council doing what needs to be done properly with the help of a marvelous staff, but today, that's not where we're at. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. You don't get your other minute and a half either, so thank you.
Can I sell it?
No, you can't. Well, that's like our carbon trading or something, isn't it?
I'll put it in the city coffers, I'm just saying.
Do I see $10? Do I see $10, $20? No, sorry, just a little bit of levity in the middle. Okay, thank you. Councillor McKenzie, please.
Thank you, worship. Sometimes I think we're sitting here negotiating for the province. I mean, I heard it said that if all of these items move forward and we accept the report, well, I thought that regardless of whether the city of St. John accepted the report, the rest of the province was going to get some of these things that are in this report. So if it doesn't move forward for the whole province because of the common council of the city of St. John, there's an issue. Okay? We talked a little bit about the pension crisis. Yeah, there was a pension crisis, because when we started in 2012, that was the biggest problem the city had. There was a pension problem that wasn't being dealt with, and hadn't been dealt with for a long time. And so, yeah, we had to deal with it, and it was painful, and nobody, nobody mentioned anything about, you know, taking $10 million out of it for a few years. You know, we talked, maybe adjustments so that it can go from eight years to 10 years, something like that, but, you know, we got to be careful what we say. St. John Energy next steps. The vote was already taken, you know? The proposal was put in front of the legislature on how to make St. John Energy, you know, a better company and be able to expand, and it was voted down. I mean, that's it. I've got the vote right here. I've got the amendments right here. And property tax, I mean, nobody was asking to change property tax. The spirit of the motion was to have it addressed, have a committee, have stakeholders come in. Is there a problem with property tax? And that was turned down. So when you look at that, and I say, you know what? Those are the things that are going to be, that are going to make the difference to the city of St. John. And without those things, the report's great, there's lots of good things in it, but you know what? Today, right now, we needed some things to happen, and they're not happening. And to push those down the road by having reviews and having committees made up, and sometime in 2023, we'll see what we can do for you, you know? I just, I can't in good conscience say, oh, well, that's all right then. We're going to have to make these cuts, everybody in this room's going to be affected. Everybody in this room's going to be affected by these cuts. And it's unfortunate that they're going to have to be as deep as they are, but that's just the way it's going to be. So do I have extra time?
You have 30 seconds.
Okay, give it to this guy.
No, no, that's not how it works. There's no trading. Thank you, sir. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Well, thank you, worship. So it looks like whether we approve or disapprove this report, we're going to have to make approximately $10,000 worth of cuts.
10 million, I wish it was 10,000.
10 million, sorry.
We wouldn't dare if it was 10,000.
10 million. You know, I go back to December 2017, and at that time, we had a budget, we were going to cut 4.5 million, and at that time, we were cutting community policing, fire prevention. It was very heavy on the protective services. I don't know whether it was just fire prevention or what was cut, but a number of things. One, probably a fire station was going to close and so forth. And so regardless, because there's nothing in this report, not when I say nothing, almost nothing that's going to happen immediately, these cuts will have to take place. And city manager, you can say, well, we're going to look at new revenue streams, but I want to tell you, if we try to put tolls on roads, which I don't hope we don't have to, I don't even know if we're allowed to do it, or you increase parking fees, or you increase resident or non-resident fees for recreation, it's all hurting the community. You may not believe that, but it does. Economic development, tourism, it takes pride in St. John away from the residents and the businesses. Everybody gets cut, and we're just left with no growth, because people will not move to your community if you don't have a good quality of life and you have items such as tourism, arts and culture and all that. And those are the easy things that will have to be cut. And so regardless, tonight, whether we approve or reject, with no bridge financing, no extra money, and I don't want the money, the province to give us the money, I know they don't have the money to give us, but they do have taxes from the city of St. John, and they could somehow put in that tax reform just a little bit early to give us enough money to bridge over the next number of years, whether it's two years or three years, so we can keep going and not cut and destroy what we already have in St. John. And that's my big point, because we have to cut regardless, because there's nothing in this report that says we'll help you today or tomorrow. It's like years from now, and our cuts will be done, and we'll ruin a number of people's lives, and people will move to other areas.
Okay, thank you, deputy. Councillor Hickey.
Thank you, worship. Good enough. I've heard it so much tonight. The report's good enough. I've heard it my whole life in St. John. That's the reason we're in this situation, is because we've made decisions based on, eh, it's good enough. That's why we got here. And the long-term commitments that are made in this plan, which are good, they're just not soon enough. We need those long-term commitments in the short term. It's the main thing that needs to happen to address our two-year financial gap that we're going to face. And I think my big point is that, and I hope at the end of tonight, one thing remains clear. It's that between the city and the province, we're all on the same team here. We're all going up to bat for our constituents, we're all making sure that we are putting the provinces and our cities' interests first, and I hope that we can continue to stay at the table. I hope that the province stays at the table, I hope the city stays at the table, to make sure that we can continue to work on this so that we can deliver real and concrete And if we do turn down this deal tonight, if we do turn down, if we do not accept the report, I'm confident that the province will still be at the table, I know the city will be still at the table, and for the sole reason that I know that they're in it for St. John. I know that the folks in this room tonight care about the city, care about the greater St. John region, and are willing to continue to work to put together a plan on this, to make sure that we can really get back to the table and move the region forward. Thank you, worship.
Okay, thank you.
I'll sell my time, too.
You can, after the meeting, you guys can meet to sell your time. Thank you. Councillor Casey.
Thank you, worship. I still haven't completely decided yet, but I'm, you know, I know the city has to bright size, basically. We haven't had population growth in like 50 years, and, you know, we built up so much, we have more buildings, more roads, basically more everything. And, you know, as you've seen in the slide, you know, property tax is where 77% of our money comes from, and if you have no people moving in, it's, you know, hard to get more property tax revenue. So, you know, I expect to do, you know, I expected all along to do cuts and extra revenue. I don't know where the extra revenue is coming from. As you've seen from the slide up there, we made $12 million in extra revenue ourselves out of like 153 million. So I don't expect a whole lot. And, you know, I have high expectations of government, basically every government, provincial, federal, municipal, mostly the bigger ones, because, you know, they can, I think they have a lot easier time to affect more people than a municipal government can, because we're, you know, well, we're really affecting like 125,000 if we're lucky. So with that, I, you know, I expect a lot, you know, the people in Fredericton are supposed to be the best of the best that we have in the province. So I don't know, I'm still thinking it over, but, you know, it's tough. There's not much here. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, councillor Armstrong, please.
Thank you, worship. Okay, I'm going to go back to what I first started to think, it's about independence, no matter what happens tonight with the vote, guess what, folks? We're still in the same mess that's been going over decades. We're still going to make cuts, you can't cut your way to prosperity, but it's reality. This is a business. We're going to have to make hard choices, not political choices, hard life-threatening choices, I guess is the word. People are going to be affected. But we have to reorganize, we have to do business different in this city. We have to. It's not to be negative, it's reality. Reality. I get myself wound up when I start talking, so I apologize. We had a councillor here that said fair taxation in the white paper. People, whoever he said, never get it done, never get it, he's the only red MLA down here, councillor Jerry Low. Don't say you can't get things done. There's going to be a committee September 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. It's done. That doesn't mean taxation's going to get done, but it's going to get found out who pays all the taxes in the province, good or bad. So this council can make the right decisions, make the hard decisions, and get things done. I believe that. But you know what you have to do? You have to tell the people of the city of St. John what's going to happen. And number one, you have to have a plan to tell the people, a long-term plan. They're not going to leave the city. Some might, but the majority will stay. But you have to show them the path to success. You know why people want to hang around successful people? Because they're successful. It's life, and we're in a life situation here now. I don't care who the government is, like I said, it doesn't matter. The paper doesn't, isn't going to change anything. The reality is, we have hard choices to make, and as councillor Hickey said, I don't want to leave it for the next council. Absolutely, I think it's immoral that we leave it for the next people in 2020. Whether anybody runs around this table, gets reelected, immoral if we leave those hard choices to them. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Councillor Norton, please.
Thank you, worship. You know, folks, from my timeline, it's already with the next council, a lot of this. They're, the next council's going to have some heavy lifting. You know, we often talk about regional collaboration, and this report provides an opportunity for us to move away from aspiration and into action, period. Are we better off with this report? Yes. I would encourage council to support this as a starting point and not as a conclusion. And my last plea is just grab that rope, folks, and let's start to cross that starting line and on to the next thing. This document provides a lot of hope for St. John, the greater St. John area, southern New Brunswick, and the province as a whole, and our municipal partners and cousins provincewide share that belief with us. Let's endorse it, and let's roll out these actions and get to work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councillor Reardon's light is not working, but you wanted your last three minutes. Okay, thank you. There you go.
Thank you, worship. Everyone who's in the room tonight, I'm sure have been aware of the slides and the information that's been presented, but I met Minister Carr for the first time the other night, on Monday night. And so it's the first time I've had an opportunity from this position to speak about this whole thing, and so he hasn't heard me speak on this before, and he may not have heard some of the other councillors speak on this before. So Alaska, so what's missing, I guess, I don't know if hope is there for me in some ways, because while the leadership is there and the vision is there, I need those actions. So I would ask my fellow councillors, because it's the first time that we've had this opportunity to meet with so many people that actually have the ability to change our story, if, and I don't know what the timelines is on this, and whether we want to accept it or reject it, I don't know how much is there to accept or reject, but would it be reasonable for us to table it? And I'm not trying to stifle anyone's conversations if this wants to go on, I don't know if this would be a good time to do that or not, see what could come back from the province, and see where we go from there. I want to work with the province. I just don't see, I don't see where we're gaining any autonomy here to do our own thing. It's like councillor Merrithew says, we don't want more porridge, we want to make our own, we want some autonomy. And I know a lot of that legislation is difficult, but there are those few little things in there, like I'm harping on, St. John Energy. I'd love to see that, because that would really impact St. John. So I put that out there to my fellow councillors, I'd be happy to go along with it, I'd be happy to make the motion, I'm not going to do anything right now, because I want to ensure that everyone else has had an opportunity to speak, but I will just put it out there for food for thought.
Thank you, councillor. Okay, so I'm going to make a few comments now, thank you very much, everybody. Just a couple of, so my, you know, comments to begin, I guess, is that, begin by saying that, and I think everyone is in this mindset, that we always need to do what we believe is best for the community, for the citizens of this community, regardless of the pressure, the lobbying, and we have an obligation to make difficult decisions. So I respect the, you know, I respect the perspectives being shared here tonight. That's democracy. I believe we have a timing issue. I'll share with you a few notes I wrote on my sticky here. Stressful, divisive, hard feelings, lost opportunity, angst, broken trust, et cetera. And I believe many of these things could have been avoided through this process, and I believe context matters. The city of St. John and senior staff have been working hard with the government of New Brunswick and on the city's financial challenges since early 2018 on municipal, on the municipal sustainability working group, part one of this report. The city manager clarified we had no involvement in part two and part three. These issues have been at the forefront of St. John Common Council since 2017 and brewing for decades. During the election process, the city gave all parties the opportunity to address the city's sustainability and asked for their recommendations and commitments, sorry, just resetting my own time, if elected. Here was the objective of the working group, goal statement, by 2021 and preferably sooner, the city of St. John will have eliminated the structural deficit and be on a path of sustainable growth such that it is in a position to significantly reduce its tax rate over time. The objective has not been met. So the question becomes, why would we accept a report that falls short? And we've heard arguments for and against. This means that the city will now have to return to its original and difficult plan of reducing, cutting necessary services to city residents in order to maintain its financial sustainability. As a result, and it is my view, that this will require the city to look at deep cuts to our city operations and funding partners, impede our ability to grow locally, regionally, and will impact the provincial economy. This could have been avoided. Let's be clear, this is not as easy as some think. In fact, a recent citizen engagement exercise, 70% of the respondents did not balance a budget at $8 million. We don't have the choice of giving up as council members, as staff. Our barriers are well-known, and the solutions are very complex. This means, and illustratively, less transit, parks, roadwork, community centers, arenas, fire stations, police officers, money for economic development and tourism, recreation, parks, aquatic centers, center, you get the picture. We paused in early 2018 because we had a chance for real action to address the known challenges and opportunities for our city's sustainability. This city has had a long and unfortunate history of having been given, in my view, the short end of the stick, or accepting bad deals, and it has to stop. The city was not looking for bailouts, it was looking for a first phase of tax reform, which would not have raised costs, however, would have recognized the unique relationship that few cities- costs, however, would have recognized the unique relationship that few cities have with heavy industry in New Brunswick. We could have avoided devastating cuts, and instead we got an L. The city proposed many additional solutions to address well-known challenges we face, and unfortunately, most of these were rejected by government and/or delayed. What we needed was immediate action, and what we got was a commitment for more studies and the potential results years from now. This will only continue to kick the can down the road, creating further debt for years to come for residents. And the time, in my view, for action is now, immediate in my view, and the path we're on is very unfortunate. The true and transparent purpose of the new deal, supported unanimously by this council, was to have real reform action and recognition of the present challenges we now face, all well-known again, and many as a result of provincial involvement. That's not blame. That's my view. We didn't get here on our own, but let me say, this city has cost issues. And yes, we need to restructure. I personally communicated that to the premier. I've communicated that to ministers. We've communicated that. We have to restructure. There's no question we have ownership. Anyone that suggests we don't have ownership is, is speaking of falsity. And we've communicated, as I said. Most of the city's actions in so-called accountability were already identified in 2017, and were part of our plans to implement prior to the working group commencing its work. Most of the city's actions are either already being implemented within our earlier restructuring plans, and actually require no involvement of the province to identify. So, while I'm incredibly disappointed, I'm ready to get to work. There's a general false narrative that the city is poorly run, and that somehow we've arrived where we are on our own. That's not true. We're a $200 million corporation with $2.7 billion in assets, and there are no real benchmarks, benchmark communities in the region who compare in terms of scale. Simply put, there's no comparison. There are many provincial elements, as I mentioned, that have contributed to our current state. Amalgamation that led to a huge city with a small population, tax policy, arbitration processes, relationships with industry, legislative flexibility, regional cost sharing, the ability to generate revenue, and so much more. I will certainly recognize that some of these items are identified for action in the future. They're not dependent on this document. And I wish to thank the province for keeping these, these commitments made to municipal associations last February. We need, and during their campaign, but we need accelerated timelines and the perseverance to get them done. I wish to clarify, from my perspective, associations that jumped in and commented in the last couple of days weren't endorsing the sustainability report for St. John. They were endorsing commitments to municipal reforms. There's a difference. The city was counting on this government to put the people of St. John first, and we did expect our local MLAs to deliver real and timely actions. The problems have been well-stated and shared with all stakeholders, and the lack of achievement on the original goal will, in fact, be detrimental to our city. In my view, we immediately need to prepare for a complete restructuring of our operations and the development of a plan to address next year's 10- to 12-year, 10- to $12 million shortfall. A starting point will be to revisit 2017 plans, implementing those actions, or some of those actions already underway. This will make some people very happy and feed a narrative. It is how, it is the how, excuse me, that will be most difficult. The narrative is, just cut. Just do it. Why haven't you done it already? It is the how that will be most difficult, and the impacts on our ability to be a better place to live, work, and play that's most concerning. And as I said, context matters. The city has challenges, and these must be addressed. At the end of the day, the taxpayers of the city must be respected by taking bold and swift actions. The cause and effect of decisions have been ignored for far too long. Almost done. Some will say, we'll pay the price if we don't accept this report. I'd say that unfortunately, the report did not meet the core objectives, and that accepting this report would be disrespectful to our citizens, and will handicap the city if there's no immediate action. Council has a right to reject a report that doesn't meet our goals. For now, we know where we are, what support we'll receive or not, and we'll need to move on with the difficult but necessary restructuring. I do believe our city and region is full of potential. We did already have a regional collaboration meeting. I would say there's a lot of work to do there. I believe, again, that our city is full of potential, and our region is full of potential, but the province must grow, and this can't happen without St. John. If the provincial government had agreed to the first phase of municipal tax reform that would recognize the impacts of heavy industry on St. John, I suspect the council would have, and who knows what we're going to do here in a moment, overwhelmingly endorsed this report. We needed a report that acted now, not with a bailout, but with a province-wide reform that would have set St. John on a path to growth and sustainability. So, last paragraph. Until we find the courage to think big and act boldly to address our financial realities, our future will continue to be uncertain. And in my view, we'll once again get the short end of the stick. It is, in closing, not a lack of appreciation of all the work. There's been a tremendous amount of work, but we have not met the goal. And it is my view that this vote tonight has nothing to do with binding arbitration, property tax reform, the accommodation levy, the regional task group has already met, this report is even approved or not approved, the needed changes to RSC, and every single action that the city has identified to take. I just, I don't couple them together. So, the question for me is, did we meet our goal? Thank you very much. And Counselor Sullivan, you'll wrap us up.
Thank you, Your Worship. Back to my teaching background. Where is this on the grade scale? It's not an A+. Is it a C or better? For that person who wants to graduate from high school and aims for that C, I think it's a pass. There's room to get better, but this report doesn't fail. There is nothing in this report that is bad for the city of St. John. To those who have said, we don't want to pass this on to the council of 2021, I know. One of the things that binds us together, and the council, Counselor Armstrong said it well about ownership, and we've got to deal with it. And we're going to deal with it. And I know whatever the outcome is here, we're going to deal with it. Except, if we don't accept this report, we have to deal with $1 million more of it in 2021 and 2022, and potentially a whole lot more starting in 2023. There's money that we're saying no thank you to if we reject this report. Minister Carr said the other day that both sides are going to have heavy lifting to do. On the provincial side, it's going to be the legislative changes and moving forward on all those things, municipal reform, tax reform, arbitration reform. For us at the city of St. John, it means setting the table for two years of tough decisions to get through 2021 and 2022 budgets, before some of the more meaningful reforms start to kick in and take effect in the 2023 budget year. I'd remind everyone that those special pension payments are concluded in 2028. If we can fight through the next couple of tough years, to get the longer-term things kicking in in 2023, five years from 2023 to 2028, and a $10 million annual payment stops, I think in today's world, that would be 12 cents on the tax rate in 2028. I said on money, it's better to get things done right rather than get them done fast. I still am at a bit of a loss as to understand the difficulty we and our partners had in releasing the report to get a more broad discussion. I know there are other members on council asking weeks ago, why couldn't we have it out, to talk about, that wasn't me, but I am certainly in agreement with them. I would have loved to have had a broader discussion on this, but here we are. Staff of two levels of government, along with politicians of all political parties, engaged with us, the white paper discussion, have invested significant time
It's time, Counselor.
Prior to, that wasn't three minutes?
Okay, well, three minutes by my clock.
Okay. I'll take the extra 60 seconds. Mayor Darling and the State of the City address called Tax Reform Regionalization: Monetizing St. John Energy and Arbitration Reform is Game Changers. Those are all addressed in this report. I would say, let's endorse the report, continue the work we're doing, and continue the conversation with our provincial partners.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I try a table motion, see if anyone's interested in it?
Okay. Okay, so we have a tabling motion.
For 30 days.
Okay. So, you're fine with that? So, okay, so the motion on the floor is to table this report for 30 days, Counselor, or, Comic Clerk?
Aye.
Just help us, yeah?
Yeah, procedurally, Your Worship, typically you would add a reason for the tabling and the timeframe.
So, 30 days is there. Counselor, let me get, Reardon, let me get your, your microphone. Where are you? There you go.
Well, I guess to facilitate, I mean, the report's only been released yesterday, and a lot of people haven't had time to review it. And I'm also hoping that being here tonight with our decision-makers for Fredericton, that having heard us, that that will, and what our concerns are, that they will be able to take those back and maybe, maybe, do something with this over the next few days to give us a little bit more. I don't know whether you can or you can't, but I'd like to at least have that option versus reject it or accept it. I just don't feel there's, that's, I'd like to try that for starters.
Okay, thank you. So, everyone's clear on the motion? I'll call the question on the tabling motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Sir, hands, please, high.
In favor of?
In favor, in favor of tabling. One, two, three, four, five? Oh, excuse me. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, those opposed? Okay, two, three, four, five. Okay, thank you.
For Dawn.
Yeah. So, I will, how long do I get? Is this like Family Feud? Can I, can I, I'll see you guys in about a half an hour? Yeah. Yeah, no, I'm, can I, can I ask a clarifying question of the city manager? So, clarifying question to you, city manager. What, what indication did we have in turn, I guess, is it dialogue, I guess, can always continue? Was this the final report? What, what information did we have in terms of what we had in front of us?
Your Worship and members of council, I'm not sure I can answer that question directly. This was the report endorsed by the provincial cabinet. That said, I think it's fair to characterize our relationship with the, with the public service at the provincial level as quite healthy, collaborative and professional in approach. And having heard the discussion this evening, perhaps there is scope for reconsideration. I really can't comment one way or the other beyond that at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Can I phone a friend? Okay, um, okay, I, look, I think we, no, sorry. Yep, can't, yep. Okay, I will, I will vote to table the report. That motion is carried. Okay, motion to adjourn, please?
To adjourn, Mike.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm a bit contrimined. Thank you.
The night market is indeed open.